All right, we'd like to get started, like to welcome everyone here in our chambers and all those who are out watching on TV land. I've asked Dale Robinson to give us a prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee this evening in capacity of this city council meeting. We're indeed grateful, Father, for the tremendous, bounteous blessings that thou has bestowed upon us for this wonderful country in which we live, in this beautiful city we have an opportunity to reside in and raise our families in. We pray, Father, that thy Spirit would be with the mayor and the council this evening, that they might be guided and directed in those decisions that they make. They might be for the benefit of our city and for the residents that live here. We're so grateful for them and all those who serve so diligently to create this wonderful place for us to live. We're grateful for thy many blessings and do recognize thy hand in all things and pray for this now at this time in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dale. I've asked Councilman Mendenhall to lead us in the pledge allegiance. The audience, please rise and repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is public comments. Anyone here that would like to come and address the council in a public comment other than, if there's some public hearings, if you're here for those, we'd rather you save those for those public hearing, especially of issues. But if not, if you come on up. If not, I see none. I guess we'll go to council comments. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to comment. So, Sumoa had their water meeting and during that meeting, Chris Thompson presented some information to us about the U R L S water, that the pipeline that's being built from Spanish Fork, mouth of the King, and over to San Equin, and concerning you are, or the Sumoa and the being able to use them to order this water from the U R L S and some more issues as we go forward, and presented that to the cities. From that, we, they're going to have a work session and invite more people there because there was more, felt like that there needed to be more people there that needed the information that was going to take place. Also, the Mountain Eagle Water Board met, we're continuing down the road to come up with a management plan for our groundwater in the future so that we have that groundwater in place and then we can not, so that the state doesn't have to come down and demand that as our waters increase. Of course, our water for this year has steadily increased over the last, the snowpack up in the mountains, grateful this year, has kind of steadily climbed for the last month. When we look at the flow chart, it's looking good for this summer. So, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Great. Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to invite our Heather Yowd up from the chamber, fill us in on the going-ons there.
So, we had our last bills and bagels last Saturday. It was great, we had a great turnout, we had a lot of people come to find out about the new tax reform that's possibly going to be happening with the legislature, so a lot of questions got answered with that. So, we also, for our March business of the month is going to be Grifols Biomet. They are the new plasma center down on Main Street. We're not sure of a date for that yet, probably next Wednesday. March 7th, so this Thursday, we have a ribbon cutting for Jeff Wolf Studios. He's a bronze sculptor in the area. We're doing that just at the chamber office and that will be at noon. On March 12th, I H C is doing their topping off celebration, they're going to set the highest beam in their building. You actually have the opportunity to go and sign that beam before they set it this Saturday from nine to, no, I lied, 11 to 1:00 in the Macy's parking lot. It's on the 9th. But this actual celebration will be on the 12th, so, and that's just up at the hospital building site. March 14th, we have a ribbon cutting for Big O. They have a new ownership, so they're kind of doing grand reopening for them. March 20th is our new networking luncheon, it will be at the Justice Center. We will, are going to have Ari Bruning with Invision Utah Home and talk about the Valley Visioning that's coming up in April. That summit will happen in April in Provo. And then the last thing I have is March 28th, we have a ribbon cutting for Star Shee Latique. She does some cute handbags and things just out of her home, so, I'm on that one. Not so yet.
Thanks, Heather. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Wow. Good. So I'll leave more often, huh, no? Good. Councilman Mendenhall.
He acts like he says that regularly.
Yeah. He should.
Thank you, Mayor. Few meetings that I've been involved in since last council meeting, a few, more than a few Utah League of Cities and Towns meetings, like Heather brought up with the chamber watching the sales tax bill. We've had weekly meetings up at the Capitol, watching all the legislation that is about to wrap up this session next week. Just quickly on the last agenda that we had, just so people know how involved we are as a city and especially, you know Seth is in constant meetings up there and is asked to research and also speak to bills and legislation that's happening. We spoke Monday about Tier Two retirement changes. I know Chief has been involved with the Chiefs of Police Association, we appreciate the good work that association does, and Chief Ross coming, said he's going to be done. Do you only serve for a year or do you serve multiple?
You can serve multiple terms, and he's been in two terms and he's time for exchange.
You're up next? Who's up next?
No, but I know who is, I'm excited.
Oh, okay, all right. We're, Chief Adams is well represented up there. We're, an important retirement change for Tier Two retirement, I just, while I have a public forum to say it, it's been represented last week on the Senate floor of the legislature. Thankfully, it wasn't our local representatives here, our legislators that said something to this effect because they know better, but some legislators inferred that local government does not support their, their public safety, their firefighters and their, and their policemen. I know Chief shaking his head there knowing that that's not the case in Spanish Fork. I know that's not the case in a whole host of cities across the state, but that's what was said nonetheless. I want to just publicly say that, Mayor, that you know as well as I do, and I think the rest of the city, that's the first item we look at, is the safety of our citizens and that means making sure our public safety is taken care of. Appreciate your work there, Chief, on tackling that issue and we think we've come to a good, a good spot with that legislation. H B four forty-one, the tax act that Heather mentioned, H B one nineteen deals with referendum and other political activities, and H B four forty-three, excuse me, four thirty-three deals with the inland port that we heard a lot of last year, and that bill is, a modification to that bill's come up to possibly take that other places in the state. So dealing with a lot of things on the, on the League of Cities and Towns front and we'll be there for one more week, at least in the weekly meetings discussing those issues. The Active and Healthy Committee, really quick, just wanted to give a shout out again to all the hard work that that group does, that committee does, especially Susan Chapman. She's worked hard to get the Q P R system obviously taught to as many people that will listen and, and with Dale's good work and Susan's relentless work, that has now got into the Nebo School District. And so last week, they, or excuse me, earlier this week, they taught teachers and administrators in Maple Mountain High School, I can't remember the other schools, Dale, there was Spanish Fork High, too, and Springville. Okay, so those three high schools and taught leaders how to better recognize people that are dealing with mental health issues and question, persuade, and refer them to get help if necessary. The Rotary Club is going strong, we had a board meeting today. We've got some good projects that we're working with some synergy in the Parks and Rec Department that we're excited about, I'll announce more about those next council meeting. Lastly, the Strong Project, the Strong Family that, up on the east side of town, that we had the chance to help with as a city, but really the city just came together and, and made a very deserving dream happen for a family, will be aired on B Y U T V, let's see, Tuesday, March 12th, so next Tuesday, if you can put this reminder in your phones or tablets or whatever, next Tuesday, March 12th at 7:00 PM on B Y U T V, will be the first air of that, that this is a family inside our community that over a hundred people came together and helped finish their basement for, for special needs kids that they have at their home. It's such a touching thing to be a part of, thousands and thousands of dollars raised and, and some, some lives really changed. So it'll, it'll be on YouTube the next day on March, or 13th, Wednesday, but Tuesday, March 12th, 7:00 PM, B Y U T V, you'll see some great things that happened in Spanish Fork this last December. So, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Great. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, committee meetings for the quarter will be at the end of the month, so for this week I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Beck.
I just want to extend a congratulations again to new sergeants Zach Adams and Cody Harris, both have recently been promoted from their previous assignments in the department. Good choice there. Tell them, congratulations. Broken record here, but from now through the end of June, the children's fines on overdue books are suspended, so we just encourage residents to get your kids back into the library, that there'll be no overdue fines through the end of June, and that is just on children's books. And then, the Spanish Fork Pageant, next Saturday night, that's at 7:00 PM on March 16th, and you can get on S F, S, yeah, S F City Tix dot com to pre-purchase ticket. It is assigned seating, eight dollars per ticket, and that'll be a fun evening to support the girls here locally at a, a local event to support our city, so, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. I've just got one thing to report. Last time I was gone, I was in Washington, D.C. We had the American Public Power Conference back there, which is always a good thing, all the public power companies represented meeting in Washington. We talk about how we can help make public power better for each one of our areas, and then we had the opportunity to go meet each one of our congressmen, and as I met with each one, and they were all very supportive of what we're doing here with our agency, and I just gave them one charge, just to keep the crazies under control back there in the best they can, but I don't know, see if that'll work or not. But, yeah, it was good, good visits, and we're represented well back there, and they know our issues, and we're excited there. Okay, let's move on to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty. Public hearing, F Y two nineteen, budget revision number two.
So, I got one question for the audience. How much does it cost to run the city?
Lots.
Good answer. Good answer. That's Amanda Groberg, and I welcome her to our meeting today.
Is she a plant?
Worked, didn't it?
Not related to Taylor.
Nope.
Okay.
Today's is a budget revision, and it's our second revision. There are some large amounts that, some projects that need to be put in, and as we go through the year and we find these projects that we need to have done or start, that's when we amend the budget. So we are, by law, approving a budget and then spending the money afterwards. So, I'm going to walk through, maybe if. Let's try it now. Here we go. So the current budget is a hundred million. Amanda, that's a hundred million, okay? We're going to adjust that up, sorry for the line, that must be this PowerPoint in this room that makes my alignment go different, because accountants don't like it when the commas and decimals don't line up, so I'll have to look at that next time. So we are increasing this budget by nine and a half million dollars, that's a lot of money to increase it. Last time we decreased it actually in revision one, so, and some miscellaneous funds, and so the new budget split of the pie is broke up in these three big numbers. So this is looking at the budget from about 10,000 feet, simple to see, three pieces of a pie, but there are more into those numbers of each one of those pies. As we drill down to each one of these, this is the revision number, so you can see our million, our 110 million, this is the difference, and so as we can see in those three types of funds, the general fund is increasing a million eight, enterprise funds are going up seven million, and miscellaneous funds are going up 379,000. So we're going to talk a little about, about each one of those, we're going to drill down a little bit closer to see what these numbers mean. So in the general fund, there are some changes in all of the funds. You can see the general fund provides a lot of good services to our city in fire, ambulance, library, park, cemetery, senior center, pool, golf course, all those things are provided here. This, whoops, go back one. We can see right here in the police department, that's a large, and we'll talk about some of these large ones. It's for some personnel changes, some people have retired and some new ones hired and some changes in that, and also a security system that's found down at the Justice Center and the police station. They're updating that right now, and so that's the majority of what's in the police department that causes that large amount. Another one here in general buildings, it's called the Veterans Memorial Building, their roof has another section that needs to be replaced, and some additions for our Festival of Lights celebration that we used, that we had this last little while. The last one is parks, and there's, that's a million three inside parks, that's a large amount, and I want to talk about what those are. A lot of those have to do with liability issues that, along the dripping rock trail, there's some, some rock, falling rocks that need to, dripping rocks on dripping rock trail. So they're going to put some retaining wall stuff there. The playground at the reservoir up at that pavilion, if people have been there, you've noticed that that's in dire need of repair for some liability issues, and there was some lighting issues at the sports park and some lightning issues, some damage that was done by a lightning strike that we need to take care of. That takes care of that number. So this number, million one, has to do with the mountain bike grant, the sports park to finish the final phase, phases of the sports park addition they did, and there's a large park up in Legacy Farms, which I'm sure the people in Legacy Farms are excited to hear, this is going to happen for their neighborhood. Another thing I'd like to point out is, as far as, these are big numbers, it's expenses, but there are grants and some impact fees and developers' contributions that are going towards these things, and so the funding is also being mostly handled through grants and other types of expenses that the city has. Okay, so again, the three pieces of the pie, it's 110 million, right Amanda? Got it. And if I, we first talked about the general fund and the enterprise fund. Enterprise funds have to do with the utilities, so we have water, sewer, electric, garbage, storm drain, and broadband. So here's some big numbers here that we're, we're changing in them, and those are mostly capital projects. I'm going to talk about each, a couple of these capital projects in each one of these, but you can see in the electric, there's about four and a half million dollars that are being added to the budget, and those are large substations that are being started right now. So the city is committing through a purchase order to adds transformers and infrastructure in our electrical system, but a lot of those expenses will not be spent until next year. But since we're committing to buy those things at this point right now, we're going to add it and show that the city's committed in our budget, even though some of those are going to roll over till next year to finish those purchases next year. With this power purchase, as the city grows, more residents, more businesses use power, and so as our estimate goes of how much power our residents buying, that means we need to buy more power to sell to them, and so we increase our expenses to cover that. At the same point, we get revenue from, as we build that out, so there's a revenue stream that's going to cover that added expense. And there are, so there's about six and a half million just in capital projects, some of those will be rolled over to next year, and you'll see those being budgeted, the balance, what doesn't get done. Again, that's the budget, the last part is the miscellaneous, and there's the 300,000, has to do with our new fire station. I'd like to make sure that's in the public's ear as far as hearing about our new fire station. The city council's in the process and in planning this new fire station, and we are doing the architects hiring and designing, we've purchased property, so that process is going. This is adding 300,000 to that, to that project for the fire station, and as we roll forward, in the end, it may be between five and seven million dollars, I'm not sure exactly, Chief? Somewhere, it's a good, good range.
Two million range.
Wiggle room there.
I think we need to send the chief to the shooting range, a little more on dead.
Sites are okay on the broad, open site, right? Open site. But it is a big project that's in the works and anticipating funding as we plan forward for that. We don't know if it's going to require a bond issue for that fire station, or we're hoping that we can adjust some revenue streams and do that without a bond issue, and so we'll see how close we can get to do that. As far as this, in this budget, there's a couple of rate changes. The traffic school fee is increasing, and I heard it was going to save us money, and I questioned how that saves us money, but it does, because of the structure of, if you've ever had a, Amanda, have you ever had, been to traffic school? Perfect, good answer. Parents will probably relate to this if you've ever had a child, or I should have Steve explain this to you, but there is fees associated with that, and the city has a fee, and then also there's fees from the courts that would go through that same thing. And in order, as we raise our fees to a hundred, the courts agreeing to reduce their fees, and in the end, it's savings to the resident in the end of traffic school.
Violator. May not be a resident.
Okay, the violator. Amanda? She's not a resident either.
That's right, that way.
Amanda, there's Hope. Okay. All right, the next one is cable TV. Mr. Bochut has explained that, we're just putting it into this document, ratifying it. I think he gave an eloquent speech last time he was here. Two other ones, water rights. I don't know that much about water rights, if Chris would like to answer that one. Talked about, he did talk about that at your water user meeting, the U L S water, and so this is a, a charge as water's being transferred and purchased by the city or donated by the, by developers to the city, is that correct? Good. And engineering's increasing one of their costs for standards books from five dollars to the actual real cost of 50 dollars. As part of this public hearing, also will be a discussion on a one-time donation to the Gail Howerson Museum. As far as the, down at the airport, everybody knows who Gail Howerson is, it's the candy bomber, World War II in Germany. He has close ties to Spanish Fork, and their plans are, is to build a museum at the, at our air, our airport, and it's a great addition for Eagle School District, Spanish Fork City, and the residents. So this will be a, one that you'll have in, as this public hearing. And that's the balance of my presentation today, so you have five, four sheets of paper and 17 slides. We are increasing it dramatically at nine and a half million dollars to 110 million, and that's lots of money, and I'll let you do the public hearing.
Well, thank you. All right, since this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Anyone in the, the audience would like to come up and address this budget and go into more detail, that would make Kent happy. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon and also a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Any questions, discussions on that?
What will the 5,000 help, I mean, just building costs, is it permit fees, is there any, for the Gail Howerson? Do you know that, Chris?
This was actually the request of the fellow who lent the plane that allowed us to go to see the transfer station sites rather than paying for that, that airplane trip.
Oh, very good. Cool, that's very cool.
That's cool.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number Z zero one nineteen, change, excuse me.
Uh huh, stay with me.
I make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2019 budget revision number two.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance Z O one.
One comment. I want to emphasize something before Dave starts. So on the budget, this is not have a property tax increase or anything as far as, the only fee increases were the small ones that I mentioned in that, the traffic school and that, and so there wasn't any property tax increase right now for any of this, so those increases are being covered from impact fees, from our own reserves that we have, and from grants and development, so I just want to emphasize that there isn't a property tax increase with that.
Thank you. All right, ordinance Z O one dash nineteen, changes in zoning designation and amending official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Leslie Evans Zone Change.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The subject property is on the kind of bend, right off of Arrowhead Trail heading out towards I-15 on the south end of town. towards I-15 on the south end of town. You can see it there. The proposal's really straightforward. It's to change the current zoning from, or which is rural residential, to change that to R-115. So the minimum lot size should the property develop would be 15,000 square feet. That's consistent with the general plan. Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that the proposal be approved. In the DRC meeting, there was a, a recommendation made to attach a condition to the proposed zone change. That would involve requiring the applicant to provide basically a public utility easement at the time of the zone change. I don't believe, our city attorney was in the DRC meeting when we had that discussion. He and I have talked and we feel like it's probably better rather than to impose that condition with the zone change, simply to do that when the property develops. So this comes to you with a recommendation for approval, again, from both the DRC and the Planning Commission, with the recommendation to approve it without any conditions.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to go to a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck and a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to come and talk about this zone change, you're welcome to come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions, discussion?
I know, Dave, this is a ways away, but this, this subdivision would be, we'd need to have that pump station done and that line done before this subdivision could go forward, correct?
Exactly. So today, there's no sewer, water, or power service available, at least not according to the plan to have things tie into what you're describing, a new lift station. So we've talked to the applicants about that. They know that today we can't serve it. But frankly, we hope that within the next year or two, maybe we can, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance Z 0119, changing the zoning designation and amending official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Leslie Evans Zone Change. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Ordinance Z 03-19, change in zoning designation and amending official zoning map for the Spanish Fork City.
You said three, you meant two.
Oh.
Just, just to clarify.
Oh, yes, I meant two, yes. Yeah, I was trying to give a. All right, let's start over. Ordinance Z 02-19, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map for Spanish Fork City for the Nick Dart Zone Change.
Subject property in this case is immediately east of Carl's Jr., if you can picture that, from the south side of Eighth North there. The proposal's pretty simple. Currently, the property is zone commercial two. The proposal is to change the zoning to commercial office. It's a, I think, a simple, uh, simple change being done for a relatively simple purpose, which the commercial office zone gives the applicant a little bit more flexibility relative to how he can design a project for the site than what the commercial two zone allows. Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission likewise have reviewed this proposal and have recommended that it be approved.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I move we go into public hearing. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that'd like to talk on this zone change, you're welcome to come up. She'll just state her name.
I'm Keesha Allred. I live in the house right next to it, bottom right. I was wondering if changing the zone makes a difference on the height of the fence that he needs to construct between our lots.
The height of the what?
The height of the fen, the fence.
Good question. Dave, you wanna answer that for us?
It does not change anything relative to what would have to be built between this home here and the development there. It all remains the same.
And is the purpose so that he can build a little bit closer to the edges of the lot? Is that what it's for?
But the zone change?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the commercial two zone requires a 20-foot setback between a structure and an adjoining property if the adjoining property is either zone residentially or is being used residentially. So the applicant's proposal involves constructing a building here with the change to the commercial office zone. Instead of having that 20-foot setback, it goes to 10. So the building likely would be 10 feet closer to this property line here if the change is approved and that's really what it's about. That's the additional flexibility that the applicant gains is that difference from that 20-foot setback going down to 10.
Thank you. No more questions?
Right, thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go out of closed, or public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number Z 02-19, changing the zoning designation and amending official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Nick Dart Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. This is a, also a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance Z 03-19, changing the zoning designation and amending official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the cottages on the fourth zone change.
Yeah, the subject property you can see here is just south of 400 North on 400 East. They're on the east side of the road, contains just under an acre. And this is a project that the Planning Commission has been discussing with the applicant for a number of different, for a number of months. They've reviewed a number of different potential designs for the development of the property. In fact, you might recall that last month, there were some text amendments that were proposed and approved by the city council. And some of those, in fact, had to do with this particular layout and changes that we felt were reasonable and appropriate to make in order to accommodate this particular design that you're viewing tonight. So this proposal actually has two different components. One is the zone change, but then also the applicant's here to request preliminary plat approval for an infill overlay development. So specifically, the zone change would change the zoning from R-16 to R-3 with the infill overlay. And then it simply is a, a proposed infill overlay development with the preliminary plat in that zone. So apologize, it was kind of a mouthful. The main focus, frankly, of the Planning Commission's review of the project has had to do with architecture. So I'll just kind of jump forward to that and I'll let the applicant speak to this in more detail, but this is a photograph that the applicant circulated with staff in the Planning Commission a number of months ago. And kind of follow up on that, these are a little bit more detailed, actual architectural plans for the proposed buildings. Frankly, I think they measure up well to what the applicant's represented, that they intend to build on the subject property. And frankly, I think it's largely because of how well that proposed design, architectural design, was received by the Planning Commission, that once we got to the hearing that they held last week, there really wasn't a lot of discussion, a lot of debate. Some of the things that we had talked about in previous months that the applicant addressed, and I think some of this will ring true with you, given some of the discussions we've had recently. So for example, the ends of the buildings, making sure that there are some different elements there, so it's not just a big blank expanse. Even the backside of the building, you're making sure that there are some variations in the roof line in different ways. A little bit of relief front and back on those planes as well. Those are things, again, that the Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time discussing with the applicant. So going back here to the site plan, this is 400 East. The proposal would have the buildings front onto 400 East. There would be, in essence, 16 feet from the front of the building to the sidewalk. So that's commiserate, just to kind of give you a little bit of perspective with the development that's across from the sports park. They're across from Volunteer Drive, those townhomes. The style's a little bit different. These won't be as elevated, so I think in some ways, that relationship of the proximity of the sidewalk to the buildings will be a little bit less pronounced. But I think from a design perspective, there's some of the same things come into play. The other building will face onto a small courtyard kind of space. We've talked to the applicant about, you know, maybe the need to do something there that would serve as some kind of an amenity for the residents. In all candor, my recommendation's been, they'd probably appreciate just having some, some open turf, you know, to use however they'd care to, as to have a pavilion or small playground or something like that. But I'll let the applicant speak to, you know, any things that you might think are appropriate to include in that space. We've spent quite a bit of time discussing some utility issues that exist on this block, like most blocks on this part of the community. For example, right now, there's a power line that basically bisects the property. The applicant will be putting that underground and rerouting it.
I'm gonna let it touch the roof like the house is now?
Uh, we try to avoid that where we can. Relative to storm and rainwater, different things like that, frankly, there hasn't been a ton of discussion. I think those are relatively easy issues to work through. I'm trying to be really succinct here, and we've talked about this project for a long time. Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission have recommended that it be approved. Kevin Olson's here tonight as the applicant of the project and I'll let him maybe add anything to what I've shared unless you have any questions for me.
We might.
Okay, I won't go far.
Good. All right, I'd entertain.
Words?
Yeah, come on up, Cap, you come and give us your presentation.
There ain't much to give here. So Kevin Olson, basically what we got there is on, you've seen that, 350 North, about 400 East. There's two old homes there now that we're gonna be demolishing. They're in pretty disrepair. And there will be, that's basically what we're gonna be building. So kind of the design, the architecture look we got was, if you guys have been to San Francisco, the painted ladies, they call it, down there. So it's very similar to that. I really think it'll actually clean up the, that part of town a ton and be a good little project. We've done this with some other, other cities here in South County and it's really worked well. So we continue to do that and hopefully be able to do more of these around here.
Great.
Basically, any questions?
Will you sell them as townhomes or are you going to?
Um, some of them we're gonna sell and then honestly, some, my partner and I, we will keep for rental units.
Okay, any other question? We might have some more after we get out of the public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come up and talk about this project from the public, you're welcome. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. Any other questions or comments?
I have two quick comments. One is just a public thank you to our Planning and Zoning Commission. They put a lot of hours into studying things out and vetting things that by the time it gets to us, this process looks super smooth. So thanks to them. And this is a perfect project, I think, for this area, so thank you. I think it'll be really nice.
Dave, one question for you. You mentioned a project down by the sports park and 16 feet from the sidewalk. Were you saying that because this is the same kind of setback?
I don't know exactly what it is there. It's something between probably 14 and 18.
I gotcha.
So it's similar to this. This would be 16.
These aren't as high as those.
Question I have is just on snow removal. There's the two private streets there. I would imagine snow would be pushed out from those streets. Fourth East is, is plenty wide to accommodate that, but there are times where we have lots of snow that we, there are snow mountains on Fourth East. And Fourth East, for being a residential road, is not 25 miles per hour. It is, people do not drive 25 miles per hour on Fourth East. So that's my only concern is just mitigation, is that just a city thing where we just have to watch when snow piles up from being pushed out of there? Or what? With the speeds, there, there will be on, you know, on-street parking there on Fourth East. And it's wide enough, there's, there's currently plenty of parking as it is. I just, I'm looking at that second and third order effect.
Sure, no, that's a great question. Actually, so in all our other subdivisions, we've done similar to this, we actually don't push any snow out into the road.
Okay.
And so no snow will be pushed out there. When we plow this, you'll be, there's, there's about a 10-foot wide area, mow strip or whatever, that the snow will be pushed into. So no snow from the private streets you see there will actually be pushed out on the Fourth East.
Right on, great.
To answer your question.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. Is it, that, I think, I think I saw a picture that says.
You'll have to come up to the microphone.
And.
There's about three million people watching on TV.
All right, so I was wondering, I think I saw a picture somewhere that had it, there were garages for each of the units, is that correct?
Yeah, they're on the rear of the.
Back of them.
Okay, so is it a one-car garage or two-car garage?
Two.
Two-car garage. And they're supposed to be like a single-family housing?
Correct.
Okay, cool, that's all I wanted to know, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance Z 03-19, changing the zoning designation and amending official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the cottages on fourth zone change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scopes. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Argal?
Aye.
Councilman Scopes?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 04-19, changing the zone designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork for the Greg Bird General Plan Amendment.
Thank you. So this actually is not a zone change. This would simply change the city's general plan. So maybe it should take a quick minute to talk about the relationship between the general plan and zoning. The previous three items that you reviewed all involved actually changing the law relative to what somebody can do on a property. That's zoning. That, that, again, that is the law that gives certain property rights to property owners and that sort of a thing. And it's distinct from the general plan, which is an advisory document that does not give rights to property owners, but serves a very important purpose as the blueprint for zoning. So in this particular case, with the property that we're looking at, which is south and east of Maple Mountain High School, so First South is probably just right about here. There's one property between the subject property here and First South. There's a new LDS facility that's recently finished here just across the street. This is a subdivision. I believe the homes were constructed by Edge Homes here. They finished that a few years ago, all off of Spanish Fork Parkway. Does that help relative to just bearings on, on where the subject property is? The subject property is currently zoned R-115, as are several other properties in the area. But again, with this, we're not talking about zoning. We're talking about, you might even say like the precursor to zoning, or that blueprint, which is the general plan. Our general plan designates all of the properties east of Spanish Fork Parkway and south of First South as what we call an estate density designation. And in that case, the highest density that's allowed is just over two units to the acre. And the most dense zone that's permitted is this zone right here, the R-115 zone. zone. Just maybe a little bit more by way of context. The majority of the properties that have been annexed in this area, they're still zoned real residential, but immediately adjacent to the subject property are a few different parcels that all are included in a project that was approved a few years ago. Hasn't gone anywhere. That was approved as an R one fifteen subdivision. The proposal is to change the general plan so as to set the stage to potentially change the zoning from R one fifteen to something else. And in this case, it would be from R one fifteen to either R one six or R three to accommodate development that might be similar to this. Some of you might recall when we discussed adopting the R four zone a couple of years ago. We looked at several different projects with the Planning Commission. We looked at one in Springville that actually served as something of a model for some of the, the designs that are included in Annie's Acres or the Bradford. You also might know it as the Warner Project, just north of South Lane. And that is very similar to the concept that is ultimately proposed to perhaps be a, a model for the development here. Main floor living, so a development that would be catered really towards perhaps retirees, folks that are a little bit older, predominantly with four different dwelling units, all under one roof. Something maybe like that relative to its design. Again, similar to some things that we saw in Springville and, and what we've reviewed and approved to be included in the Annie's Acres project. As proposed, the general plan would be changed for this, just under ten acres here, from that estate density designation to the medium density designation. And maybe to finish with a few thoughts on that, from my perspective, from a landy's perspective, I'll be completely honest, a development like what we're talking about here, I don't think that has any potential to have an adverse impact on anything that might happen around it, whether they be single-family homes on half-acre lots or any other kind of development. I don't see this kind of a project impacting things adversely relative to property values or really in any other way. But particularly as staff to the Planning Commission, I'm very aware of concerns that they've raised over the years, things that we've talked with you about, just relative to concerns about where somebody in Spanish Fork might build developments that would accommodate single-family detached homes on larger lots. And given that, just in the very recent past, within the last couple of years, the estate density residential designation was created and used in this area and a couple of others in the community to set land aside for lower-density development, I'm really reluctant now to recommend a change from that. And that, in fact, is the Development Review Committee's recommendation, which is to not change the general plan from that estate density designation to what's proposed, that medium-density designation. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposal last week, and they made the same recommendation. And maybe just to offer a little bit relative to some of the discussion that the Planning Commission had, and in fact, they said these same things when we reviewed this just as a concept with them last fall. They believe the concept is great, and frankly, so do I, I think, also. Both the Planning Commission and, and staff, we recognize that the demand for housing that, that in our day and age would cater to what are the baby boomers, pretty big bulge demographically, a lot of, a lot of folks. We know there's, there's not just a, a demand, but a growing demand for that type of housing. So the simple reasoning for recommending denial is the belief that this is not the right area in the community for that. And again, it comes to you tonight, it's kind of unique for us to recommend that, that proposals get denial, denied, and that they, they work their way all the way to you. Maybe just one last thought. I think if the council is inclined to approve the proposed amendment to the general plan, then it may make some sense, or there may be some value in sending it back to the Planning Commission, maybe for the recommendation relative to a, a larger area or something along those lines as part of the process. But that's a little bit about the project and staff's recommendation, as well as the Planning Commission, Planning Commission's recommendation. You have some materials that I gave you a hard copy of, that the applicant provided and of the applicants here tonight, and you can certainly answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Does the applicant want to address us before we go into public hearing?
Yeah.
Come on up.
My name's Greg Bird, for the record. So just quickly, a little bit of a background on the property. We've owned this property for, I think, a little over eight years. We bought it when it was in the county. We actually, at that time, anticipated the property to be, to be annexed into Mapleton City, not into Spanish Fork City. And then a group around us, a proposal was brought to be annexed into Spanish Fork City, where they said they had utilities that we could connect to Spanish Fork, or Mapleton, I think, at that time, wasn't, wasn't looking at bringing utilities in and wanting to annex. So that was kind of the background, because from, through the DRC and the Planning Commission, some of the, the discussions were, a year or two ago, they, they, they put these, what's the designation? The R one fifteen, which are your estate lots, the, I guess, what I've, what I've understood now is that the city was worried that there were too, too much density was coming into the town, so they wanted to have some estate lots. And so we, we had a good discussion about this last week, and Planning Commission and, and a couple of the commissioners asked the question to Dave. Can, are projects like that I'm trying to propose, are they, you know, they said, hey, we love this idea, we want this idea, but somewhere else in the town, right? And so there, there's really not locations in the town that really can handle a project that, that we are proposing. Secondly, when they went to these residential estate lots, the city pretty much took the big swaths of land that were left and put all estate lots on them. So all around Maple Mountain High School, estate lots, mouth of the canyon there by the golf course that's still undeveloped, down, down the river bottoms, estate lots, down along Main Street, the very end of the river bottoms at the other end, estate lots. So there are huge areas in the city now designated specifically for estate lots. And, you know, I, I do, I do a lot of development around the state and other states, and specifically on this piece, I, I come from, my, my father's in the demographic that, of a type of project where this would be something that he would look for. We have built hundreds of these units across the state of Utah and in other states. But generally, what happens is the cities will generally only approve these types of projects for the seniors in parts of town that, which are generally less desirable. You know, everybody's like, go build it over there, go build it on the west side of town. And some, something, I just, I think it's unfortunate because the, you know, there's a, I, I had given you guys a copy, I don't know if you have, about the Utah Aging Initiative. And it has a couple of interesting statistics. Basically, it's saying the sixty-five older population's gonna grow by a hundred and twenty-six thousand people from twenty-ten to twenty, twenty-twenty. But by the year twenty-thirty, it's going to grow a hundred and fifty-five percent up to five hundred and forty-four thousand people. Essentially, every twenty-three minutes right now, since twenty-fifteen, somebody is turning sixty-five years old. So there's this huge demographic of, of people that want to have a place to live. And I'll go into, like, like my current, like my, my father's house, he's got stairs in it. He wants single-level living, and he wants to find a place. But, but generally speaking, these, if you go into other cities, they generally put them in spots that aren't in, you know, where you guys designated this property as just estate lot living. Those opportunities for someone that's sixty-five or older doesn't exist on, on the part of town where they may choose. So we're not looking at doing low-end housing. We're proposing, and we talked with the staff, we don't want any stucco on our units. We want full brick, full stone, siding, hardy siding. These, these are gonna be upscale communities. But, but what, on page six of this report, which, which I thought was, was the most important, it says, at the very top, it says, "Many seniors want to retire in place or stay in the homes and the communities where they live and where they, where they have lived most of their lives." The issues, the issue is, is they're looking for communities where they don't have to maintain their yards. The yards are maintained by an association. But they can't stay in their communities because the communities are forcing these, these, these projects on the other part of town, or down, downtown, maybe in a, a commercial area or commercial zone. I've never come to, come to a, I've, I've taken property from two units to the acre to twenty-six units to the acre. I've done it a lot. I've never taken a property that's at an R one fifteen, which is two-point-one-five units to the acre, and I'm asking to go to an R one six, which is, if I have that right, let me just make sure. Yeah, an R one six was five-point-three-seven units to the acre. I only need four-point-six-six to five, but the zone, I mean, technically, we could go down to an R one eight if needed. But the, but the, the reason why I'm, I'm so intent of making sure that the city council hears what I'm talking about is, we're not talking about coming in here and taking ten units to the acre versus, we just had a proposal that just passed that was in a zone that went from three units to the acre to twelve units to the acre and had no issue. But since that, that project was built, where houses were fifty years old, the city's like, hey, you want a house that's fifty years old, so therefore we'll double the zoning in that area, right? And, and it was a little island inside of that, that zone. And I just, I, on, on this property, there are so many reasons why this is not just good development, but good planning, for many reasons, in, in my opinion. The seniors are a major benefit. If we can get communities like this in the areas around where they currently have homes but want to downsize into single-level living where they don't have to deal with stairs, you're gonna have more of them stay close by. There's volunteering. Inside of this retirement packet that I had sent, it also said that many of them haven't prepared for retirement properly, so they're gonna be working from the age sixty-five up to the age eighty-five now. And it goes into saying how they're a great part of the workforce. So the city would have potential of good people with a lot of experience to stay in the city and be able to work. They also take fewer trips, so, you know, the, we had, we had some residents at Planning Commission that showed up, and I really appreciated their comments. Some of their questions are, is it going to raise, is the traffic going to be higher? We learned that that twenty-five-fifty east is actually the Spanish Fork Boulevard, which is a major thoroughfare. And so our property is already going, it is a major thoroughfare or road, traffic road. It doesn't make sense to have our property right off of that road have estate lots. I think this would be a good phasing into the estate lots. They also are, some of the questions were, are you gonna build multi-story buildings? We only want single-level living. They're, they're all ramblers, they're not two-story homes. So those on the other side of the road and the edge development that came last week were, one of their concerns are, what type of product are you gonna build? We only wanna build rambler homes, we're not building two stories. This is for the seniors. They want single-level living. They also asked a question about commercial development. Are we looking to do commercial here? I had no idea there was property to the south of us that was looking to change the zoning to commercial. We don't have any desire to have anything commercial here. We just want a nice community where I, I feel like the need, we, we could probably sell that ten times over, because there is a need today. It's just, where are they gonna go? They want it, they want to be nearby. Let's see here. Traffic with a single level, Spanish Fork Boulevard. You know, the, the other issue is, I didn't fully understand that that twenty-five-fifty east is Spanish Fork Boulevard. I mean, it is a, we, we will never have, whether it's, it's the estate lots, or if, you know, you're so inclined to, to listen to our petition, we'll never be able to generate the, the traffic that the high school football games, the Maple Mountain High School, there are different events bring currently. And also, that's already a, a major artery road that, you know, and I didn't understand that till last week, but this would be a, a good project. And, and I think it, it's good planning, instead of just forcing, I, I don't mean to say the word forcing, but instead of requiring that everybody that lives out there have these big estate lots, you're gonna have a, a better grouping of demographic of people on the east side. It's one of the most beautiful sides. That, that part of the, the city's incredibly gorgeous with the mountain ranges around it. But I'm sincere when I, when I, when I say that, you know, the fifty-five and older, the retirement age community deserves an area in the city on the good part of town in a nice area, instead of in an area where you got fifty to seventy-five-year-old homes surrounding them. This is something that they deserve to have a nice place to be able to call home, downsize, live close to themselves. We anticipate, we, we propose to fence our entire property. We'll have a clubhouse. As I mentioned, they, they take lower trips. They're not a burden on the, on the community because they, they're not taking kids to dance, to sporting events, to academic events. We actually think it's gonna raise the property values. We don't anticipate any of these being lower than four hundred thousand dollars in value. And, you know, and, and nothing like this exists from what we learned last week in the Planning Commission on the east side for a project like this to happen. And I, I think this would be a very good transition from that Spanish Fork Boulevard into the estate lots.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. We, we're limited with time here, so I know you're passionate about it, and I think you've touched all your points there.
Yeah, just the last, last one, I mean, we would, you know, if, if it, if it would be beneficial, we'd be open to sitting down in a, in a, a workstation meeting with, with staff or the Planning Commission, city council, sort of the, the weekend. I, I believe there's a need, but what we've gone over and what we looked at with Dave, this is not taken care of anywhere in the general plan in Spanish Fork for the, for the fifty-five and older community that does exist here in the city. And, and I just, you know, beg that it's allowed to happen on a good part, on the good part of town.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. All right, so this is a public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Argyle, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, anyone that'd like to come and talk about this proposed ordinance change?
I'm Jenny Martineau. I live in Maple Highlands, which is that Edge Homes development right there. My house backs up to that new LDS church that was just recently built. I don't really have any objection to Mr. Bird's community that he's proposing. We saw renderings last week of the buildings themselves. They're, they're beautiful. Our concern, and there's several other people here with me, our concern is, a couple of years ago, we fought for keeping that land residential instead of going commercial. Part of it was being discussed for commercial. That's our big thing. We don't want commercial, and we don't want high-density housing. The other night, when we were here last week, the other Mendenhall that sat on the commission expressed.
The lesser Mendenhall.
The lesser Mendenhall. He expressed concern that it was a huge jump from the R one five all the way down to an R three. And by doing that, it opens up a doorway to high-density housing. So like I said, I'm not opposed to this, but whatever we can do to keep high-density out of there is what we as homeowners in that area would like to have salvaged. And those estate lots, Mr. Mendenhall also spoke of, that had been earmarked for quite a bit of that property out there, simply because it's becoming few and far between here in Spanish Fork with all of that. Couple of other notes that I made. He also said that more research would be needed. I, I, it might not have been him, it might have been whoever sat in Mr. Argyle's chair at the time. I don't remember who that was. Who was that? Euler? That's right, Euler. He said that they felt like more research would be needed before they could give their stamp of approval on this. Someone also else, that's really good grammar. Someone, another member of the committee had said. had said that there were already two other locations in the works for 55-plus communities here in Spanish Fork. I'm not quite sure where that is. I know it's over here on, I think that they said it was South Town, south of town, and maybe west side over by, behind Shopko, I think, is where they were talking about at one point. Also, in not this picture, but the picture that showed the huge area, only two of the three lots have been acquired for the whole thing. There is still a home there that has not sold their property for the entire project, and that's up to that property owner. But as a member of that community up there, like I said, we lo, I really liked his plan, I think it is a great plan, it's just opening that door for what else could come up our direction, is my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, as you come up, realize you got three minutes, and so if you keep it to three minutes and don't repeat what someone's already said, we'd appreciate that.
My name's Angie, and as you stated, um, that there's already a lot of R-115 up there, it's not true, it's actually R-112, which is smaller lots. I actually looked for land where I could get a little bit of a bigger lot, and there is just nothing in that area that, so it actually is needed, R-115, there's not a lot. And honestly, I've thought about moving to Mapleton because of it, but I think there's a lot of people in that area that would like bigger lots, they are not available in that area at all, even the Legacy Farm Development, they are smaller, much, much smaller. So I think you need to look at the area, there are not a lot of R-115s up there, most of them are out by the sports complex and out towards Salem, like on your way out to Salem. Also, Tracy, she had a comment on the, she's on the planning commission, she was saying that, "I think you need to zoom out a little because all of that area, it just is a big island, like a chunk right out of the middle that they're taking, they're not really taking all of that other area around it into consideration." So that was a big point that they made and why they were against it, so I just think planning out the area better. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Jennifer Bailey. Um, would these streets be private streets or city streets?
They would be public streets, there'd be private driveways with public streets.
Okay, so like as far as the same issue with like snow removal, that'd be the city's responsibility with that for things?
Correct.
Okay, and then, uh, my other question was, um, with going down to, uh, like why is there a need to put so many units in per area here, like going from the estate lots? Like, could they do a 55 and older community with more spread out, like more green space or less units on the area to help it stay more of a nicer area, like, 'cause what my neighbor said over there, um, I have friends that have moved out of our neighborhood and had to move to Mapleton or Salem to find areas with bigger lots. So, there, a way, so like, it doesn't let in the door for more rezoning to smaller homes? Is there a way to go to less units?
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, we could go down to the R-18, which is four units.
But that wouldn't change your plan that you have right now, right? Could you could still-
It could change it a little bit, I mean, right now, as it sits, it's like, uh, Dave shows two ways, like the lot is 42 units on the piece that we do own.
Greg? Sorry, the camera guy's saying we can't hear you at home, sorry, you're gonna have to come with the microphone, thank you.
So, I, I think, so the question you asked, 42 units, that's, I think that is at, uh, 4.88 units to the acre. That's why we went to the R-16, which is 5.3. If, if we needed to go down to the R-18 to be 4.03 units to the acre, we could work that, for sure. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, an issue.
Thank you.
I think, may, honestly, Mr. Byrd, I think the change is a little bit more dramatic than that, with 60 units on acres, which is what we're looking at there, the zoning would need to be R-3, we're at, uh, something north of six units to the acre at that point, and that'd be the zone that we'd be looking at. So I hate to say this relative to, like, almost a scare tactic, but in all candor, having properties zoned R-3 in this area, I think, uh, certainly sets the stage for the city to field numerous requests for higher-density zoning than R-115 in the immediate vicinity, which is something I think that's worth considering, you know, whether that's a decision driver or not, that's up to you to decide. Does that make sense, just kinda relative to-
Are you, are you done? I know it's your, 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 your time up here, so you still got 30 seconds left.
I'll be fast. Um, yeah, so my other question was, this street, since, because it is kind of on an island and there's all just farm and areas there with people with big lots with farmland and stuff, does that, would that road just stay a dead end? Or what is the plan for that?
It would tie into the development that's been approved to the east.
And what is the zoning for that property?
R-115.
So that would be, yeah, so having this high-density tie into an estate lot, I think is gonna deter those people from building, like, 'cause no one's gonna wanna have their nice estate lot be right next to that. So I just would plead with you guys to, um, deny this change.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and address? Sure you would.
I'm Jesse Carden, my, I'll be quick, 30 seconds, time me. My, my biggest concern is, one, the highness of the density next to the R-115, not because of the fact that it's not nice, plan is nice, um, just because of the, the city's done a really good job of buffering zones, going from, you know, staggering what zones go to what is next, and so that's one of my biggest concerns, so.
Wow, you did it. You might get a candy bar after. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. You got one minute.
So, just lastly, we've spoken, so after the last meeting, the, the R-1, whatever the zoning is next to us, the property owner's already come through the city, he came to us and, and he would be willing to come together with staff and propose, if, if the issue is you're worried about an island versus, you know, an area, uh, we feel like off the Spanish Fork Boulevard, being required to put a, an estate lot off that Boulevard, I, I think the, the buffering into the estate lots makes a lot of sense. The, the price of these homes will be equal to or greater than any of the homes across the street at the Edge Homes, we're gonna be raising the values again. Uh, it, it's, uh, the reason why the groupings is because we build a clubhouse, it's gonna be a, it's, it's gonna be a, a low maintenance, uh, uh, property management group will be maintaining the area for the residents, but we do have the ability, the property owner that has the majority, 90% of that property from here up to, I don't know what the road is, up by where the seminary building is, on that corner, all the way, he would be willing to get together and sit down with the staff and, and propose something.
Great, thank you. Let's go out and then you talk.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Argyle.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon, all in favor, say aye. All right, we're out of public hearing, Dave?
Yeah, so maybe just, uh, to that last point that Mr. Byrd made, one mechanism that the city's used historically to allow for some higher-density areas of the community, higher-density neighborhoods, and the example that I'll use are the townhomes that are just south of the Sierra Bonita Elementary School, if you can picture those. We did not change the zoning or the general plan just for that property to accommodate that development there. That property is zoned R-112, where those townhomes are, they exist because they're part of a much larger project that in essence consolidated some of that density down there between, uh, US Highway 6, the railroad tracks, and the elementary school, um, in exchange for having less density further to the north, having things like the Sierra Bonita Park, so, um, you know, relative to the idea that maybe, uh, some work could be done with some neighboring developers, so you in fact might deal with a much larger project that would allow for some density to move around within that project and still have it develop, perhaps in the R-115 zone. We have mechanisms in the city to allow for that, and frankly, I think that's worked well. And that really has been the primary way that, uh, that any kind of attached housing's been built in the community, is through that kind of an approach, so just as another thing maybe to consider that, that might be an option that could work.
Any questions or comments? I'm sure there might be a couple.
Were you going first?
If not.
Okay, my, my, we want two cents or three cents, I don't know, I don't have much money, my wife just remodeled our bathroom, so I'll just give a comment if that makes any sense. For the eight years that I've been doing this, I, I've never seen something, uh, get, move on with the recommendation not to pass from the DRC and the planning commission and then come to us, I've never seen this in, in eight years. So it's, it's a unique situation. My question is, um, one comment, have we ever not planned on going to the tracks? As, as, uh, Mr. Byrd said that he was under the impression that Mapleton could possibly have annexed him in at the time he was buying the property, is that, Seth?
We were, uh- Spanish Fork's boundary has been on, right in front of his property since you were in high school.
Okay.
If that gives you any of-
A long time ago.
It was a long time ago. I think it was black and white, still.
Yeah, yeah, it was a long time ago.
Since about 1990, I think, is, is when the, the city annexed out and, and grabbed, even to the property that is where the high school sits today, I was looking at some of our, our historical records to see that, and it looked like 1990 is when it went there. So this property is on the outside, right? It's on the east side of that line, but it's touched, the city limits has touched that property on the road since 1990.
That's always been my understanding, is that we were going to go to the tracks in Spanish Fork. With that said, I appreciated the, uh, option to get together and possibly even work with the project to the east, um, maybe coming up with a compromise. We do that all the time, maybe a couple of council members, the developers, and, and maybe look at something else. But at this point, I'm not inclined to make a recommendation to change the, the map as a result of just, I'm not there yet. But, but if we come together and, and there are some compromises, I appreciate the neighbors that are even willing to say, hmm, you know, they're not, they're not unreasonable, I guess, to say, like, there's nothing worse than when somebody complains and doesn't have a solution. And so, um, I mean that with, with real love, I appreciate good feedback that you've given us, and I think that I would be inclined to maybe get together, we meet with the planning commission, um, we try to do it more often than, than it happens, but it usually will happen at least, well, it happens once a year, if hopefully more, um, but, uh, it would be good to sort of see what all the personalities are thinking, that's my, let's call it two cents now.
Anyone else?
I'll be quicker than Brandon.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for taking your time, coming out, thank you applicant for, for the process, going through it, and to repeat a little bit of what Stacy said earlier about the other projects, all the work that goes behind the scenes to get something to this point, um, of, of all the, the different ins and outs and details of this, it seems to go somewhat quick on a, on a night when it comes to us, but it is a, a lot of work by the planning commission and DRC, uh, to, to get to this point. I wrote down everybody's points, everybody's comments, I guess, to talk a little bit about what Brandon was talking about in Mapleton. Uh, I heard the same thing, uh, from residents, especially up in this area in the east side of town too, it's a, it's a beginner to intermediate market sometimes for Spanish Fork, and, and then when a, a career change happens or something happens and, and people are looking for that, uh, next level of, of home, uh, like, I can't remember your name, sorry, Angie, that mentioned that they, they are going some, a lot of times across the tracks into, into Mapleton. If, I think speaking to that, if you thought that, that this was gonna be annexed into Mapleton, I, I, I don't see this development, uh, in, in, in a Mapleton, even though, uh, they did get an assisted living built, uh, recently, uh, which I think is a good facility, and we have those, we have those in key places in Spanish Fork, this is not assisted living, I get that, but we, we don't put those in, in, in bad places, I know that, they're, they're in some good places in the, in the city. Uh, I think part of the allure of estate lots here in this area for me too is, I think that general plan was, was amended after the high school was built, I think, uh, families that have kids living with them closer to high schools is a, is a good thing, cuts down on the, the amount of drive time that you get to a high school, so there's a plus minus there of, yeah, there would be less traffic for 55 and older, but there would be the, the, the plus of, of kids get, being closer to school too if these were estate lots. So I'm inclined with Brandon that I think we could be open to looking at, uh, at, at a larger piece of land, like Dave mentioned, not just this land, but a larger acreage of land of, if that still fit, fits the, the, the model that Spanish Fork has put together, because our, our general plan is amended from time to time, but there's a lot of work and time and sweat and blood and tears that go into, I know, getting a general plan to where it is, so I'm inclined to follow the recommendations at this point there, sorry.
That was longer than Brandon. Chad? Just real quick, um, this is the kind of home that I would like to move to, no basement, no upstairs, no stairs, everybody taking care of my yard. I like that, these look really nice, and, and I appreciate what you said about having a nice neighborhood, I don't wanna move down by the ballpark and have a bunch of stairs, I want a nice home that I can enjoy in one level. But, don't give up, I think there's some work needs to be done here, I like the fact that it would be in a nicer neighborhood, I like that there's a school here, there's a church across the street, and some parks that are gonna be built in the near future, so, um, uh, but I also, I support the, the development committee and their, their proposal to us, I think there's some more work needs to be there going forward, but I do like the idea, absolutely. Anyone else? If not, I'd entertain a motion. And we can make a motion to deny it or approve it.
We're just trying to make it intense. Don't you know the intense factor?
Got it, thank you.
It's on television, 17 people that are watching right now are on the edge of their seat.
I would move that we've, we follow the, uh, the recommendation of the DRC, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, to deny ordinance 419, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Greg, Greg Byrd general plan amendment.
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, second by Councilman Gordon, this is a roll call vote, and the motion was to deny, just so everybody knows when you go to vote, so Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Okay, uh, you got a good project, just needs more work. Okay, new business, ordinance A-19-01, annexing property known as the Barrett Annexation.
You'll probably remember holding a public hearing on this a few months ago and approving the annexation. There is a certain amount of time that's allotted to have a plat recorded after the council approves it, and the plat was not recorded during that timeframe, so we're here tonight to simply ask you to reapprove the annexation, because you've already held a public hearing, been told that you don't need to do that again, so it's just simply a matter of, uh, as we would hope, that you would simply act to reapprove the annexation, it gets recorded and it's done.
Okay, any questions, comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance A-1901, annexing property known as the Barrett Annexation.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scobes, this is a roll call vote, Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
It's approved, Fire Station 62, Laylock and Company Professional Service Agreement. Uh, chief.
I'm excited to be here.
You look like it.
The, uh, the memo was written by Chris, but he's given me the opportunity tonight to, uh, address you. to, uh, address you. We have gone through the feasibility study for the new f- uh, fire station, Fire Station sixty-two. Uh, that feasibility kind of basically laid out a, a floor p- plan, a footprint, a square footage, what we might need, uh, and then that was presented to the public or entities that wanted to bid to be our architects. The RFP went out, uh, I think we had seven, maybe eight, uh, companies come in and bid for the project. Uh, those each is the mayor and, uh, brother Gordon, Councilman Gordon, knows.
Brother?
They all came in, uh, with their proposals, and we all kind of, uh, looked through them individually as a group. I think there were eight or nine of us that looked through those proposals, uh, and then ranked them, and decided who, who we liked. And that was excluding any costs. We all came up, interestingly enough to me, 'cause this is the first time I've been through it, uh, we all came up with the same person or the same entity, uh, as the one who we wanted to be our first choice. And then after we picked that individual, uh, they did something what they call normalize, uh, the, uh, the budgeting process or the, the fee process, which was new to me again. I, I'd never heard of that either. Uh, and it basically makes so that everybody's on the same playing field, the number of hours compared to the, the amount of money that you're charging. Uh, and again, these people came in, uh, under what we expected our, our budget to be, uh, which we were gr- grateful to see. So we met with them, uh, two, two times now, and each of those times they've, uh, came up with some great ideas and, uh, and I'm honestly, I'm excited to work with them. I, I think they're a great team, the Blaylock Company. Uh, they have, uh, indicated what their proposal would be to, going forward, including some visits with, uh, the community, and then it's coming back to our, our committee, uh, presenting those ideas to the committee, and then coming to a plan to, to then share with you. So, it's without hesitation that I, I share our, our belief that this company will do us well, uh, and present that to you to, for your signature and approval.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions, comments?
Mayor, just wanted to comment, we met with these, uh, two of the individuals from this company this morning for a couple of hours, and, and, well, I didn't stay for three, but some of them did, but, uh, they are, they seem very capable, and, and I don't know what other situation that's, I mean, it was so unanimous, after everyone had privately and individually vetted all of the different firms that had submitted proposals, these guys, these guys became the first choice of every person, including yourself, Mayor, as you know.
Oh, thank you.
And, uh, so I think that they will be, I think that they will be very good, um, uh, and I'm equally as excited as Chief Adams. It's just, it's just, where will the poll go and can the mayor slide down it?
Yes, it'll be good.
No fire poll. Really? Can you build a fire station without a pole?
No capes.
There you go.
No capes.
All right.
Well, we'll get to that point later, you guys. I know everybody wants the-
So, uh, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Blaylock and Company.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's done. Resolution nineteen dash oh-four, authorizing the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation for Water Smart Irrigation Meters Reader's Digest Version.
So, we are applying with the Bureau of Reclamation to get some money to do some upgrades to our metering, so that we can replace about three thousand old meters in town, and also to upgrade the software so that, uh, real-time meter usage for water can be, uh, accessed from any resident, and, uh, can kind of share with them some, uh, conservation tips, as well as the instant you have a leak in your plumbing, or toilet leak, or in your sprinkler system, it can send you a text and say there's a leak and, and, and let you know, uh, if you leave your hose on, things like that, those type of notifications co- can go out. So, I'm kind of excited about the water conservation opportunities that this has. It also would extend, uh, these, this really popular smart irrigation controller program that we have, uh, without really much advertising at all. Uh, we've had, uh, one thousand three hundred and fifty people sign up for that program. Uh, we, we, our plan was to do a thousand a year, so we did a thousand last year, we have three hundred and fifty already signed up for this year for those free controllers, they're professionally installed for free. All you have to do is click a link online and, uh, and, uh, we'll come out and do that for you, so. Anyway, it would extend that program as well, which is, is, is being shown. Bureau is doing a study on that program, and it's showing to actually save a significant amount of water, as well as, uh, reducing our peak usage, which could save us quite a bit of money, so.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution nineteen dash zero-four, authorizing the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation for Water Smart Irrigation Meters.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilmember Beck. Roll-call vote, Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Did I miss you? Thought I-
I thought you were gonna say brother Gordon.
Oh, well, I know much better.
Second time tonight.
I know better than that.
Boy, never gonna live that one down, Chief.
That's all right. Just have to remember where you are. All right, I have some board appointments I would like to make tonight. Um, I'd like to reappoint, uh, John Mendenhall to the Planning Commission. Do I need to do these separate, Junior, or do them all?
Do them all, yeah.
Okay. Then, uh, we have our new RAP tax program committee. I'd like to recommend Dave Boyack for a three-year term, Susan Taylor for a three-year term, Michael Hancock a three-year term, Richard Johnson a two-year term, Gio McConnell a two-year term, and on the Parks and Rec Committee, Terry Menlove.
I move we adopt the mayor's, uh, appointments as stated.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and thanks for hanging in here for the whole time.
Maybe didn't make a peep the whole time.
That's awesome.
I think it's a prop, isn't it?
Prop.
Seven weeks old.
Hey, come on up here, we got something for you. For anybody that can last through that many hours of city council, ought to have some candy. Yeah, that's what we figured.
Thank you, buddy, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Junior.